Please pray with me. Our fair, heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We just thank you for how you blessed this town, you washed over us. We just thank you for this town. Thank you to the citizens here. I pray that you continue to lead us and guide us as a council and the great that you would just give us wisdom. Father, we thank you for all that you've done for us, in Christ's name.
Well, if I'm your excitement for the evening, I feel you're gonna be highly disappointed. So first of all, thank you for having me here tonight, come and present to you. The City Council of Bonner Springs, I brought Mr. Mullen with me. Mr. Mullen is our Assistant Superintendent. In about a year, in seven or eight months, he'll actually be the Superintendent. So... So the goal is not to scare him off, but anyway, that's big breaking news. So with that, I'll begin. You wanna go to the next slide? So USD 204, our vision is preparing today's learners for tomorrow's opportunities. You remember when you went through high school, it was more of like a K-12 situation. And some of you, if you were old enough, it was a 112. K wasn't even around. And to this day, K is still not mandatory in the state of Kansas. So you could start your children in first grade, it's an odd thing. But it was kind of like, you know, on late night TV when you're watching, somebody put a chicken in the oven thing that they're selling, and they say, "Fix it and forget it." So basically, kids would go to school till they're senior in high school, the school would be done, and off you go. We hope you have a good life. Since that time, though, we're really working on a more of a K-12, K-13, K-14 scenario. Meaning, the goal is to start kids on their career path before they leave high school. So like my two children who graduated from Bonner Springs, they each graduated with about thirty credit hours, and which didn't get them out of college in less than four years, but like their friends, they didn't do a victory lap for five. That's really nice. Now with those hours currently, part of them are paid through the state of Kansas for vocationals. So if it's a vocational class like welding, woodworking, some of our other vocational classes that's paid through Senate bill, I think it's fifty-two. But the other classes, parents have to pay for. So with some of our ESR money, which is our COVID money, the Board of Education decided to pay for those classes to help those kids get started. So classes like college algebra, Comp. 1, Comp. 2 are now being funded by the district for those students. They have to maintain a C or better and pass the class. So it's really a nice thing, kinda get those students boosted up. You know, the other thing is, we work hard to have kids make a career pathway, starting in ninth grade and going up. We have a CNA program, and where we graduate about twenty students each year with a CNA, and they're ready to go out and make money and start on their career. Probably one of the nicest things I've seen within that program was a young lady, when she finished it, said, "I don't ever want to do this again. I never, ever want to go into medical again." I thought, what a cool adventure, because this girl did not cost her or her parents a lot of money trying to figure this out. She figured it out in high school, and she moved on. That's really what we're working on. So let's get back, go back in history a little bit, if you wanna go to the next slide. So, you know, USD 204 actually came about in nineteen sixty-three, nineteen sixty-four, when all school districts were unified. With that, before that, you know, there was the city of Edwardsville, and Edwardsville and Bonner Springs actually ran two separate programs. Except at some point in time, I think nineteen forty-five, Edwardsville started allowing their students to come over to Bonner Springs High School, and/or Bonner Springs High School started to allow Edwardsville students to come to their high school. What you find out is, in lots of situations like this, the city, who had the high school at that time, became the dominant community. Because people would, you know, stop at seven, stop at eighth grade, and then they'd go to high school, and Bonner Springs became the hub. So when unification occurred, in nineteen sixty-three, it actually brought together Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. If you see the name on there, you'll see Darrell Donahue, and most of you know Darrell Donahue. Darrell Donahue tells a really good story about unification and what occurred in those board meetings back in nineteen sixty-three, nineteen sixty-four, and he always states that he'd never go back to that time. It was pretty rough on him and his family, because that was a big thing. Go to the next slide, please. So if you look at this, this is USD 204, this is what makes us up. We're in Leavenworth, Wyandotte Counties, we're in the city of Kansas City, Kansas, or the unified government. Edwardsville and Bonner Springs. Bonner Springs is not completely contained in 204. Some of the city of Bonner Springs is in Baser School District. Edwardsville, except for that little notch up top, actually is all in USD 204. And that little notch up top is Kansas City, Kansas 500. Now, they only have like two houses there, and they literally have to drive their buses through our property to get to those. And Edwardsville has tried time and time again to have KCK just put that property in our district, but they will not do that. So that's pretty much that. And then this is where most of our students live. This is Traverse, it's a busing program we use. And the majority of our students, you can see where they live, in Bonner Springs, city proper, and Edwardsville on the south side of K-32. Wanna go to the next? It's kinda hard to define Bonner Springs USD 204, because we are a part of three cities, two counties. And so if you go to the Census Bureau, they do it for us now. They combine all of this based upon our map, and as a school district, we have about a total population of fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine, which is a combination with all those areas. We have sixty-two hundred housing units. And then if you look at the census data versus our school data, you'll see that we're still predominantly white, with the Hispanic being our next area, and then black African-American. And that really hasn't changed a lot, except the Hispanic population has gained in the last probably ten or fifteen years. Probably the hardest thing about right now is, as a school district, we're no longer growing. So if you wanna look at the numbers of where we've been at, those are divided by the schools, and also as a total, you'll see that if you follow down BSE and Edwardsville, you'll see that those schools were in the 500 range before Delaware Ridge was brought on, which dropped it down to everything down to four fifty to three hundred nine. Right now, at BSE, we have three hundred and forty students, at Edwardsville, three hundred and thirty-eight, and DRE at three seventy-two. Total elementary is a thousand and fifty, and we haven't quite been in that range since about two thousand five, two thousand six. Part of that occurred due to what happened with Wyandotte County during COVID. If you remember, the governor shut us down for nine months, but then the county would only allow us to operate with half our students in the building. And at the high school level, students couldn't change classes. So at the high school, literally, students would work in a pod, and then in the afternoon, they'd have to go take classes online. And we lost some families, some really good families, because if you just move over the county line, you could go to school full-time, every day. And that went on for three, nine weeks, am I correct? And it was finally the Kansas Legislature who stopped that by giving the control back to the school districts. Once that occurred, we were back full in session. So that kind of is where we took our biggest hook, and we're hit, and we're slowly hoping to climb out. The other thing is, and you probably know this as well as I, but we've lost our builder, or not too many houses are being built right now. Which, if you think of neighborhoods, when a new complex comes on, it does add new families, and most time, young families. So if you think of a new house being built, lots of times, that's like two kids, maybe three, to the district. But if you think of me, I live in Lee Valley. When I came to Bonner Springs, I had two kids, one in eighth grade and one in ninth grade. Now, those kids are no longer with us, they're doing other things, they've graduated. And so my house is kind of like an aged-out house. So no new kids are coming from there, and you start to see that. And then slowly, those neighborhoods, when people move or other things occur, then they kind of regenerate. And that's kind of where we're headed out to more of a leveled regeneration. We see that right now, our kindergarten numbers have been stable for a couple of years. So I think we'll come into kind of like a level build here in a year or two, which is hopeful. I am very pleased that within the city... Within the city of Bonner Springs, city of Edwardsville, that there is not a lot of competition or thought between our mill levy versus your mill levy. Because mill levies are really based upon the specific need of the organization. So it's hard to compare, you know, our mill levy versus this mill levy versus the college mill levy. But within, in all that, I just would like to explain how our mill levy works. So first of all, we have four different mill levies. I think the city has one, is that correct? You have, you have three, okay. So we have four. So the general fund in Kansas is twenty mills for all schools. When you think of our mill levy, twenty mills of that, no matter what occurs, that's set. There's nothing we can do about that. All that money goes straight to the state, okay? So that's really kind of a state mill levy, and when the state talks about how much money they spend on schools, part of that is, is that twenty mills. And the supplemental general fund, it can only be thirty-three percent of the general fund. And that is kind of controlled by the board. Capital Outlay Fund was set by the board years ago at eight mills. I think of the Capital Outlay Fund as a pay me now or pay me later. And the Capital Outlay Fund, we can't use that money for teachers, we can't use that money for books. It all has to be spent on equipment and/or upgrades or things for our district. When you think of having over two hundred rooftop units in the district, and when you can measure your roofs in acres, it doesn't take a lot of time to use that eight mills for capital outlay. That's also what we used to put in the new football field, new turf, add the lanes to the track. And so that's set by the district. Bond and interest, of course, was set on the voter approval of our bond project. And so that is very stable, because you have to pay your bond. So if you go to the next slide, the next slide, you'll find out that in the general fund, even though that goes all to the state, we only levy four million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in taxes, but the district will receive nineteen million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And that's because the state aid on top of that's gonna be about fourteen million, which means for about every dollar that's raised locally, we get three dollars from the state. And all of the general fund is based upon how many students we have in school. So based upon the number of students in school, that's how you equal out how much money you get for your general fund. The local option budget is thirty-three percent of the general fund, but once again, that's heavily state aided too. So for about every dollar that's raised locally, you receive a dollar in that funding. Capital outlay, once again, for about every dollar twenty-six cents, and bond and interest. So you can see, our mill levy has gone down, and I wish I could tell you that was done by a lot of hard work, by Rick and I. Some of it is, but for the most part, it just has to do mainly with the fact that the valuation has grown. The district valuation grows, and so we're limited. If you think of that, twenty mills, thirty-three percent, capital outlay at eight, bond and interest is set. We're limited on the variance, so we can't vary much at all within what we do. And so with that, you'll see the bond and interest has dropped quite a bit. And the reason that's dropped is because we have set payments on our bond. With those set payments, you need to raise a certain amount of money. But when your valuation went up, and our valuation went up over forty million dollars this year, you drop your mill levy. It's very simple math. It's the same way as the supplemental general fund, is the valuation goes up, and when you're doing that, it lowers that automatically, because you're capped at thirty-three percent. So that's kind of how our mill levy works. There's a lot more to it, but I kinda just highlighted the top. So issues affecting the USD 204 budget. Teachers are an issue, even now in Bonner Springs. I came from western Kansas, and western Kansas, when I left, it's very difficult to hire teachers. I thought I'd came to the hiring Mecca. People will move to the metro, and we hire teachers from Garden City, we hire teachers from everywhere west of here. But even now, we're struggling a little bit with teachers. The other thing with teachers is their pay has gone up, but not really in relationship to like the medical field. So at one time, a teacher's salary and a nurse's salary were about even, that is no longer. And you can just go through the different parts of that, you know, a teacher's salary and a welder, they were about even at one time, not anymore. And so the teacher's salary, even though it's increased, has not increased at the level of other salaries. Bus drivers, we have to have a CDL, and that's become more of an issue, because they put more things on attaining a CDL. So just when, you know, we're right there, all of a sudden, we have new regulations. And then classified staff, individuals who work with students as pairs and teachers assistants, and those people. Increased cost of insurance, which you probably have, utilities, including diesel fuel. Special education, special education was a mandate passed in nineteen seventy, and basically, the federal government assured us that they were gonna pay ninety-five percent of the cost. We've never been near that. And as we have more students with special needs, that takes more and more money out of the general fund. So we are pushing as a school district and also our Kansas Association of School Board to try to increase that funding. Food costs, we feed, oh, between breakfast and lunch, how many people do you think? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So, so once again, you see your food cost going up, our food cost going up. General building maintenance, which, when we can find people to help us on some contracts, is great. We have our own people too, but that's an issue. The other issue is, we have people that wanna move to Bonner, but it's really hard to buy a house in our district right now. There's not a lot of houses open, and, you know, I'm saying this before what occurred recently with the interest rates going up. But even if you wanna rent a place here in Bonner Springs, it is difficult. So I'm hopeful that new project comes in, and that'll facilitate some of that too. So that's some of our things. These are the board strategic plan. When I talk about the strategic plan, the main goal of that is to have kids ready to come out of high school and on to either the workforce, vocational program, or college. Noting that college is not for everybody, and vocational school's not for everybody either. But within the scope of that, the goal is that we have quality students leaving our school district. If you look at the different ones, communication and marketing, that comes up a little bit right now. I don't know if any of you have had any negative effects with social media, anybody? So I don't know where on the internet it came out that school districts had litter boxes in their schools. But I was with Johnson County Superintendents, and Wyandotte County Superintendents, and Missouri Superintendents recently. And two or one of us, everybody's had a call about a litter box, being, I can tell you, there is no litter boxes in schools, and there will never be. But somehow, social media blows this up, and so with communication marketing, a big challenge to us is these things that occur. And part of the issue is, they don't occur here at all. Part of the issue is, if something occurs in Chicago that may be inappropriate to a school district, somehow, we end up getting a call, and somebody's asking about this, I'm like, no, call them. And that's probably the hardest part for us right now, is dealing with all these things that have nothing to do with the operation of school, but it's just kind of out there that we have to monitor. Facilities, we've done a great job of updating our facilities through the bond project. Plus, we also are still on our facilities replacement schedules of roofs and heaters and furnaces, and paving roads. Personnel, once again, that is a struggle for us, but we're trying to get out there as much as possible to work with colleges. We do have a couple of grow-your-own programs. One is through Pittsburgh State, where a person is a paraprofessional can work in our building, and also work to get their degree in education, which is a great program. CTE, that's really accomplished through Mrs. Hoffine. But a lot of those programs are designed to help kids, you know, find that pathway into their career afterwards. And then also trying to keep quality teachers, and sustain and develop programs, support students, social, emotional, stability, and growth. That was a big factor with COVID, because, you know, we shut down for nine months, and we had this every-other-day thing for nine months. So we had a real struggle, kind of at the middle school, when kids were put back into the fold, especially, you know, sixth graders, who went into seventh grade, who'd never did very many passing periods. I mean, it was like, so we had two classes at the middle school one time, trying to adopt to that. The other issue was kindergarten. Kindergarten, last year and then this year, we've had lots of issues, because parents were home, and they were working at home, their kids were at home with just general socialization skills. And so those have been things we've struggled with. So any questions?
I might ask one question. I know our school district's probably not big enough, but you were talking about the housing issues for a lot of the teachers and such. And I know there was a school district in California, rather a large school district, of course, same issues, of course, housing. Rent out there is much higher. And they had actually purchased, bought, built an apartment complex, and then they were renting out the units to the teachers. And I didn't know if that had ever been something that's been floated around in this area at all.
Not, not in the metro, because even though we struggle with housing here, there's housing available still other places. But in western Kansas, specifically where they have houses being abandoned, the school district has taken them over and purchased them, allowed staff to live in there. I think on, and there was a district recently on TV in Texas that had bought a motel, renovated it, and they were so far out, the teachers, they were on a four-day work week, and teachers would come out, who'd retired from San Antonio and other places, and come out and work that week to facilitate that. So it is, it is becoming more, more an issue. Not so much in the metro, because you can still find housing. Our issue is specifically in our district.
It seems as though we, USD 204, led their way in the program with the nursing program, and then with the BTEC. What do you see as the next thing Bonner Springs, USD 204 will do?
Well, the next thing, what we're trying to do is to get more relationships with businesses, so students can go and do like an apprenticeship. Part of that, going over that hump, is insurance and liability insurance. Even though there was a law passed, it's still not really clear on that. But the goal would be to have students, if you wanna become a diesel mechanic, is there an opportunity to go work part-time in the afternoon as a diesel mechanic, but also get high school credits so you can graduate? You wanna go into construction, even though we're building another tiny house, is there an option to go into, work for somebody in construction? Is there an option to go to these different places and be like an apprentice, if you're interested in that profession? It does two things, really. One is, it gives you exposure early. So you don't go to college or vocational school, and you get out and you go, man, I really don't like this. So for instance, we have a teacher pathway, and those students are currently working at our daycare, our USD 204 Employee Daycare, and up at McDaniel's at our Early Childhood Center. So those kids are going up there, getting class credit, but also working with kids in kind of an apprenticeship to see if they like it. That's kind of the next step, I think, for all schools, is trying to find a way to give kids more opportunities, so their boots on the ground when they hit after graduating high school, so they're not wandering for a year or two, but kind of have a thought process on what they wanna do and who they wanna be.
Regarding the housing and everything, and totally agree with you. You mentioned, I think you said something about we don't have a builder, or...
I don't know. So when I came here, we kind of had an area that was being built.
Okay.
So Lee Valley was being built, you had several builders then. We don't have an area being built, so when you have an area like that being built, that brings in students to the school. New housing always does. Otherwise, you're just kind of redoing neighborhoods slowly.
How much capacity does the district have for students?
If you go, if you go back, because we built capacity. Go back to the slide with the student numbers. Yeah, BSE has five hundred and seventy-five, DRE is seven hundred, Edwardsville has seven hundred, CMS eight hundred, and Bonner Springs High School, one thousand one hundred. So what we did during the bond project is things, it was a really good time to build. Not so much now with escalating costs. So we were able to get everything we promised to voters, plus the fringe we talked about. So at DRE, we were actually able to add one classroom per grade level on the back end of that building. So the building, if you've ever been in it, has a quad, but now you go through a hallway, there's two classrooms at the end. So we actually built a capacity to have five classrooms of K-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Edwardsville, the same thing, and Edwardsville's maybe one of the most built-on buildings I've ever worked with, because there's like so many different parts to that building. But we actually, within the scope of that, there's a plan there where you can make that the same. And we look at DRE and Edwardsville maybe to be some of our bigger growth areas, even though that's in the city of Bonner Springs up top, those schools would probably go to, students would go to that area. CMS is eight hundred, and Bonner Springs High School's one thousand one hundred. When we built the BTEC, that added quite a bit of room, and then at the back of CMS, we added two rooms, and we did some reconfiguration inside. So we have room to grow, and the goal was to have that, so if the district started to grow, nobody's really forced to do a quick bond issue. So this will allow growth over time, without having somebody go, oh, let's run a bond issue right now. Because part of the problem, if you see like in Shawnee and places where they've closed schools, is if you overbuild more schools, at some point in time, when those neighborhoods stall out, then you're overbuilt. And in some cases, some of those districts are still paying for buildings they're closing, so that's tough. Yes, sir?
Yeah, several years ago, there was a movement toward alternative schools, alternative classrooms, for those that couldn't handle a regular classroom for whatever their problems were. Is there anything on that now, or how is that handled? Are there classrooms for that, or is that farmed out to other districts or other schools?
So within our district, we've worked with Green Bush, a local educational agency. So we do have our own virtual school, and it's only for students in USD 204, and it's K-12. So that is an option. And most of those students who are in virtual school attend virtually, but some of them come for a class or two, because that's an option. At the high school level, we do have a credit recovery program for students who are struggling and need to make up credits. But for the most part, we're in-person, in the classroom, working. I don't know if that answered your question, but I will say, over time, and through a lot of instructional, professional development, that we've made more allowances for kids to work, and with our new technology, every student has a Chromebook. We try to match what we're teaching to the individual more than as a group. You know, when I went to school, there was no computers, obviously, there might have not even been any invented at that time. But there was no individual... Sir? Big chief. But we're having more and more individualized instruction. So when you get more individualized instruction, that facilitates a lot of learners' needs, because they can work at their level, even though they're working in a group of twenty. Well, you know, I don't think we have any main needs. I mean, we've done well with our bond project, which is very nice, and I do appreciate the voters who voted for that. You know, probably the biggest things coming up is just recruitment of staff, recruitment of teachers, recruitment of bus drivers. And that's gonna be an issue for everybody. The hard part about it is in the metro, is we're competing against each other. So, you know, when Alitha said they were cutting staff, everybody was over there trying to grab some of their teachers. And we did, we did get a couple. No, so with safety and security, we've done a couple of things. One, we were very lucky to partner with the city of Bonner Springs. We have Officer Colom, who does a great job with our high school and middle a great job with our high school and middle school. And so, he's up there every morning at seven forty-five, and I can't think of a, a better way to start a school day than have that police car right out in front of the school, kind of announces what we're about. With our elementaries, because we have school districts in other localities, we've actually were able to partner with the sheriff's department, Wyandotte County. We have a sheriff's department officer, much like Officer Cullum, who spends his time between the three schools. And it's not, you know, completely somebody there all the time, but it is quite a bit, and he does a nice job of, of just being out local. We've spent quite a bit of money updating our systems with our cameras, and so I believe the police have the opportunity to, to see inside our building using our cameras. They have that option. And then we have automated doors. And so, in fact, on the cameras on my tablet in my bag, not only can I see all the, all the schools, all the places, but I can actually open a door if somebody's sitting in the buzzer, nobody else will. So, uh, so that's pretty automated. I always tell people, I was out of, uh, out of the country several years ago, and I was in Jamaica, and that was before we had an assistant superintendent, and school, it was snowing, and I was able to see all of our, our locations and actually a lot of the outside area to decide whether to have school or not while I was sitting there in Jamaica on my computer. So, that's, that's some pretty good technology when you're that far away, and yet you can see everything that's going on. Yes, sir? Any, any more questions? Well, if you ever do, feel free to call Rick or I. And we do like the partnership we've had with the city, and that things go very well between us, which is, which has always been nice. Probably not going to stay for the whole meeting.
The consent agenda for this evening, the consent agenda includes the minutes of the October tenth city council meeting, claims for city operation, third quarter, twenty-two financial reports, appointments to boards and commissions, and a public use request for Candy Cane Lane event. Anything to be pulled by city staff, citizens? Questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So, moved by Mr. Thompson, and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Seeing no questions, vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to our new business this evening, first of which is a resolution finding land to be in the public interest and authorizing a survey of such to be condemned for a water transmission and distribution line. I would imagine our Public Works staff, Mr. Art.
Good evening, everyone. What you have here is a resolution to pursue an eminent domain action. This has to do with our water treatment plant and the connection with Lake of the Forest. As you know, we're extending a water transmission main all the way to that subdivision on the south side of Highway thirty-two. We're pretty much there already. We're a little bit past the Sonic drive-in there, but we need to make that connection the rest of the way. The original plan was that, that land that we're discussing was supposed to be developed by now, or at least under a development action. It is in the city of Edwardsville, and as it would have been platted and approved by the city of Edwardsville, there would have been a dedicated easement there for us to go ahead and put our water line in, essentially a free easement. Unfortunately, there were some problems beyond our control, and that plating process never took place with the city of Edwardsville. So, now we're faced with either pursuing the state right-of-way, which we could, that's going to be well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars to do that, because they have so many requirements on what you have to do, first of which is like seven feet minimum depth of the line. Or, we could negotiate with those people who own the property. And we did attempt to do so. We had at least two face-to-face meetings, and I think even at least one team's meeting. We extended at least two offers. Neither were accepted. And so, that brings us where we are this evening, requesting to pursue eminent domain actions for our permanent and temporary easements. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this point. There's a two-step process. The first is the resolution, and then there'll be an ordinance following.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other concerns from the citizens, other staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution, finding land to be in public interest and authorizing a survey of such to be condemned for placement of a water transmission and distribution main.
Second.
So, moved by Mr. Shannon, and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
This may have been explained, and I may have just read over the top of it, Frank, but this is the main that's coming basically out of Lake of the Forest that we need to service or expand, or...
Sure. This would be the water main connection to our system, to the Lake of the Forest. Right now, we don't have a connection to that system.
Is that the one that's handled by?
BPU. Right now, Lake of the Forest is all BPU.
Okay.
And this would be our connection to make it ours, and no longer purchase BPU water there.
What were the issues, or can you talk about the people that refused, or what, what are we running into there?
Uh, I think they're in a, they're in kind of a bad way. And I guess without getting into too many details, essentially, they purchased this property to do some development, and they maybe didn't research how difficult it was going to be to acquire water and wastewater for their needs there. Pardon me?
The floodplain, too, isn't it?
Oh, I, I don't know. That never came up. But essentially, they are in the city of Edwardsville, and so they're subject to the requirements of the city of Edwardsville. So, even though we were running a water line in their front yard, and we had sanitary sewer capabilities, a few hundred feet, maybe, I'm going to say I could almost throw a ball, they were not going to be allowed to utilize any of our utilities. So, the cost to them, and there again, I shouldn't be speaking for them, but I mean, if they had to use BPU and they had to use a separate sewer system, it kind of drove the cost beyond what they could do to actually pursue the development. This is my understanding.
This is more than one property into Edwardsville from our sewer line and water line. It's my understanding, we've already are serving a, a property owner in Edwardsville in that area with sanitary sewer, which it would be quite expensive to, to come from the east. So, we, we are already doing our, more than our fair share.
Yeah. That was before my time, so I don't know how that came about. But that, that's the best I can explain what my understanding of this dilemma is. Anyway, they were trying to recover the whole cost of their, of their investment there from us. Which, to say the least, was not going to work.
I was wondering, what's going to happen if, if this is what happens? How will that landowner be affected?
Well, I don't really know. At least they'll recover some of their investment.
So, it goes to court?
Oh, yes.
And then there's a...
There'll be three court-appointed appraisers, and then the judge will determine, after he reviews that information, what we will pay. I, I'm pretty sure it's not going to be anywhere near what they wanted.
But it will be fair for the amount of...
I'll be absolutely fair, yeah.
...that we're taking, or is being taken in, in that domain proceeding.
Actually, a lot of the questions I had, I think you did a great job already of answering those, so I'm good.
And in the meantime, can we proceed on with our water plant?
Yes, we are.
I want to keep that moving.
We're continuing design.
But thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because with this coming up, it likes, oh, no, not something else. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
I guess I'm not understanding, will they, will there be any, if we go through with this, will there be any pushback from Edwardsville for those people?
I have no idea. I don't, I don't see why.
Well, I guess maybe I was understanding that you said that they're required to utilize the utilities out of Edwardsville. There's requirements they have.
Yes. We're not making them do that.
No, but I mean, it's Edwardville. Can they stop them, you know, that kind of thing?
Edwardsville would have to ask us to be able to provide those utilities to those properties. And I don't know.
Well, I can, um, so, maybe to backtrack a little bit on this, this is on K thirty-two, roughly from where the Sonic car dealership that's in Edwardsville that the mayor alluded to, that is served by a sanitary sewer by the city of Bonner Springs. That continues to a lift station all the way, just pretty much at the doorstep of Lake of the Forest on the south side there. One of the issues that came about in this deliberation of trying to get utilities there is that you never really want to tap into a forest main. There's a whole bunch of issues with that, as far as pressures are concerned, and a lot of accommodations. There were alternative options. They could go right into our lift station and, or manhole off of the lift station. BPU, I think, was, I don't want to say behind, but it, it was their, it's their territory, if you will, for water service, and they did not want to relinquish that, that right. So, that, again, both of those options, as far as sanitary sewer going into the city of Bonner Springs were looked at. Water was, was looked at. Obviously, we're putting a water main there, absolutely look right onto it. I, I think ultimately, there's just too many complications with all of that to develop that in a way that the developers wanted to. And again, maybe, as Frank said, we're kind of speaking for them a little bit. But ultimately, what, what this resolution is, it's finding that the land that we're talking about is in the best interest or in the public interest of the city. We need to put a water lane in, our water main in there. We can't serve Lake of the Forest without it being extremely complicated and expensive by putting in, into the state right-of-way. That would be the alternative option. However, again, we believe that cost to be much more than what it's going to take to both condemn this property and then build, build on this property. So, a, as far as the city of Edwardsville's maybe appeal or their options, I, I'm not really aware of what those would be ultimately. If, if this were to develop as a normal development would occur, as Frank alluded to, that's what we were hoping for, was you'll typically cut off about ten foot around the entire property and say, this is dedicated to a public easement, because that's where you have to run your utilities, either on the side, the back, or the front. That was what was planned for this, this area. So, they're really not, the land's not changing beyond what was, was looked at as part of the development as it initially was being proposed. There might be, you know, something to be said about that if you have to have two easements now, but, but ultimately, again, we're beyond that. We, we've got to put this line in or else, or not. And ultimately, that's why it's in front of you all today, is I think we've exhausted all of our options to work with the property owner to do this in, in an efficient way. The, the cost that they're throwing out there, the price is much more than what we believe it to be fair. So, I think what we're saying is, let's leave it to three appraisers. They'll review it. A judge will review that information. They'll determine what the value is, and ultimately, we'll, we'll go from there. There are some appeal processes, processes and all of that, too. But, but ultimately, this is a, I don't want to oversimplify it and say it's a simple process, but I think we've done this a couple of times now on, on these projects. And it's, like I said, this is, this is really about just, this project is in the public interest, and that's why it's a condemnable eminent domain action.
Well, and, and I don't want to speak for anyone, but it, from what I've read and studied, this is, this is the least impactful way to remedy the significant improvement to public services. And although taking anything is imminent domain-wise is always very important, you have to weigh the, the good and bad. And hopefully, there'll be a reasonable set of eyes that look at this, arbitrate this, three different people appraise it, and a judge give his blessing on it to make it fair for all property owners and the city and the, both city of Bonner and, and future potentially city of Edwardsville. So, please.
Does BPU have any right of refusal for us to, to service the Lake of the Forest area?
No.
Since they've been servicing it up to now?
Yeah, that's actually in the city of Bonner Springs.
So, we have the right to provide our own services and just cut them off?
Yes.
We currently have the service, Lake of the Forest is considered our service area. We've, we've asked BPU to service it for us.
Right. I'm just, I'm just thinking, we're taking, we're taking money out of their pocket. I'm not, I just want to make sure that they're not going to...
They're not happy campers.
Yeah, this is...
Can assure you.
This is still, probably something that's still getting ironed out, but that's part of the appeal of doing this, is keeping in mind, we pay BPU more than what we collect off of the residents there, just because the prices don't let you out. So, so we have our, we have a, an agreement with BPU. Frank's been working with BPU to try to re-cement exactly what that looks like, given some of the territorial issues. This is not the only one. Riverview is another one. Wyandotte County Park generally is another service area. We've got different connection points as far as fire flows are concerned to, you know, if we drop, then we can open up, and they would provide us that additional pressure to keep up. So, there's, there's a lot still that needs to get, to get done. I do want to just make a point that, as I said, if we run a water main across this property, it would make all the logical sense in the world that if it were to ever develop at that loc, that property to develop, that could be, they could tap into our, our line, and they'd have water service no different than the sanitary sewer feeding the dealership. So, again, that, that does help, I think, the, the appeal a, a little bit as far as we are getting services. as far as we are getting services, utility services to a location that otherwise does not have them.
And they're not having to pay for it.
Right.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah.
Please.
We have other connections with BPU, correct, on, on water, not just...
Yes.
Okay, but we don't happen to have a connection there.
Correct.
Okay.
We don't have a connection to Lake of the Forest at all right now.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yet.
Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a resolution finding land to be in public interest and authorizing a survey of such to be condemned for a water transmission and distribution main. Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to item number two, an ordinance authorizing eminent domain proceedings for a water transmission line and distribution mains. Same thing, but only different staff.
Yes. Good evening again. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. I think I failed to identify myself at the last one, but nonetheless, this is the next step. You've already taken the first step, so this is the next step in the eminent domain proceedings, and it essentially authorizes the city's domain attorney, eminent domain attorney, Oric, and Erskine LLP to take the next steps and actions and proceedings with the district court related to eminent domain for this.
Very good. Any other staff comments, input? None? No citizen comments? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance condemning land on, or interest in lands for placement of a water transmission and distribution main and instituting eminent domain proceedings.
I'll second.
So, move. Seconded, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
No more. Yep, I'm good.
Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. I'm sorry, those are the important business things that we have to do, and it's not taken lightly. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Onto our reports this evening, the first of which, our city manager's report.
Really, quickly, cemetery, there is a monument that is there. It's, we kindly, kindly refer to it as the Sexton Monument, not to be confused with the Sexton that oversees and helps at the cemetery, but in fact, somebody whose last name was Sexton. Prominent monument, but that has undergone a, a pretty extensive repair, and I think it, Chris could probably describe it a lot better than I, I can, but ultimately, it was, it was not in, in good condition, and ultimately, was, it's difficult to find a mason that was willing to take on that project. But I do just want to point out that Wendy Shite was, was very instrumental in, in getting a company and helping us find somebody that could fix that, as well as the Bonner Springs Historical Preservation Society, who actually pitched in to help pay for some of that, some of that repair, the tuck pointing that went, went into that. So, truly a community effort that resulted in a, a much-needed repair. Then also, I want to point out that the city, I think this is brought up at a previous council meeting, but we are gonna be sending out, if they're not already out, and I don't think they are, a little flyer that just brings attention to the fact that we are having sales tax initiatives on the ballot and just kind of breaking that odd a little bit, and then referencing folks to the city website where there's some FAQs related to those two sales tax initiatives. So, that will be one more piece of mail that will come in the mail in the next week or two. And then Frank left, but I was gonna toot his horn a little bit here, so maybe I shouldn't, but I still will. But Public Works, earlier this year, I was working with the state KDOT on C Clip, which is a state-funded resurfacing major project roadway grant program. We received notification from them last week that they are actually going to fund that project at, at a total amount of $400,000. That, that's significant, because they typically have a cap of about $300,000, so they're actually funding an additional $100,000 into this, this project, which we'll see. I wish the school was still here. K-32 Gibbs Comp from 142nd Street County Line all the way to Nettleton will be resurfaced as part of the 2024 construction work that we have planned. So, really good news as far as helping the city coffers. I think there's a competition between Frank and maybe Jennings on, on who's gonna get the most grant funding this year, but...
Justine's in there too.
Justine's in there, yeah, that's true, so. Need to get a, I don't know, an employee award or something.
Pizza party.
There you go. But yeah, a lot, a lot of stuff going on there. Also want to point out, there's a lot of recreation programs that are opening up for the, the winter months here, as well as a new thing. I don't know, Nathan, do you want to speak to the, the event up at the Agriculture Hall of Fame, or do you want me to muddle through it? Please. I know you're, you've been a big part of that, so.
So, this year, we're doing our Halloween Story Trail again. I'm not sure how many of you guys came out last year. But this year, it's gonna be at the Ag Hall of Fame. We're gonna have 16 stops on the trail, so a couple more than last year. We're gonna have hay rides, train rides, and a couple contests. So, we have an adult costume contest. If you guys come out, enter it, you could win a $50 Casey gift card. We have same thing for children's. That's gonna be an Amazon gift card, and then a witch cackling contest sponsored by Woodland and Willow. So, yeah, come out. They're pretty good prizes. Should be a lot of fun. There is a $10 entry fee to get in this year. That's just to cover the cost of running three antique tractors for three hours. I am working on getting a grant for next year, so fingers crossed for that.
And you can enter in the employee competition for that, and that is this Friday?
That is this Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Ag Hall of Fame. I encourage you all to come out and check it out. It should be a lot of fun. Be a great community building event.
Hopefully, we'll have some really scary displays. Thank you very much. Anything else? Wonderful. Onto city council items, and we'll start right here with you, Mrs. Woods.
I just get the pool painting and everything that gets done, everything that gets done, level after level. Thank you very much, city.
With the election coming so quickly, has there been any discussion about having a voting, polling location, election office location here? I know we talked about it briefly. Something I think would be great to, for like early voting, for... Even a ballot box would be great.
Do you want to speak to...
We were contacted about putting a ballot box in, and if you recall, there was one at the last election at the library that conflicted with some requirements that the library has for privacy.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh. And so, we tried to work with Wyandotte County to get one in here, but their requirements were not something we could meet as far as being able to connect into our network, camera system.
Okay.
They want to have a camera on the ballot box at all times, and the library has very strict requirements. All libraries in terms of monitoring this goes back to the...
Yeah, I think so too. Thank you. Because we haven't asked about it for two meetings, any news on First Way?
I'm not sure if no news is good news. Not necessarily. I, I know Megan has reached out to that ownership group specifically and had some good conversations. I think we've impressed upon them, and I don't think it really needs to be impressed any more than, than the community does, that something needs to happen at that location again. It's a privately held building. The individuals that own it would like to do something with it. We are looking, continuing to look at state programs that have funding available for them. So, there, there's a couple that have been refunded in the last little while. Heal Grant is the main one that we've, we've looked at in the past, and that helps to put mixed use in downtown commercial-type areas. So, again, I think the city's trying its best to try to identify these programs and to bring the ownership group together on that, but it's, it's been a little bit of a struggle, as we're all aware of.
It, it's quickly, I'm sorry to add in, it's quickly becoming more and more of a safety issue. And at some point in time, their options will be forced on them rather than...
Yep, and, and we did speak to them about some of those issues, so they did put up a fence around the, the perimeter of the, of the facility to help kind of mitigate some of those concerns. But yeah, they're not getting any less concerning.
The other one was the building at Metropolitan and Nettleton that's been stickered and unstickered and stickered and stickered and stickered. Is it just going through the process? Is it...
Yeah, so those are administrative citations that are going on there. So, what happens with those is that those start to trigger punitive fines. So, that's effectively what's happening on those, is those are accruing a fine that will eventually need to get paid if those, the sticker is not removed as part of it being remedied. So, it, yeah.
Is that something that actually has a definitive end, or can it be drug out to where it's eventually tacked on to property taxes?
It will be, yeah.
Things that we just can't?
We do, yeah. So, we typically do, if we have like a nuisance abatement...
Right.
Grass cutting or something along those lines, we'll typically send those over to the county, I think, once a year, if not twice. So, as soon, is it twice? Yeah, I thought it was twice. Twice a year, those get sent over to the county, and those are put on as a special assessment onto the property.
On the annual property tax bill.
So, that's what will happen with these administrative citations, is eventually those will come due, in which case, if they're not paid after three years, then that building will, will go through that process of actually going through sheriff's sale and, and all that, and tell somebody pays the fine.
Gotcha. And unless and until that happens, how do we prevent any danger to the public, so to speak, for things that need to be mitigated?
By reminding them that it's private property and to remain off of it. I mean, that would be, you know, the, the first responses that you shouldn't be on the property.
It's not really the city's responsibility at that point. It's also the homeowner.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're doing, we're doing our part to notify the property owner of the issue. We're telling him what the remediation is, and this is the penalty if you don't do it. Them choosing not to do it is, is again, hitting them in, in the pocket book effectively.
As well as us specifically notifying them of their risk. I mean, they're the property owners, and it's their ultimate risk of having that.
The liability falls to them.
Right. Yeah, that's what I mean, is ultimately, the private property owner has been made aware that there is, and the public too, by this big green sticker. Again, the, the city's, I think, done their part as far as...
The worst case, it's a roughly three-year process?
Worst-case scenario, yeah. You would hope most people would say, I'm gonna get charged what? You know, yeah, I'll fix that, but that's not always the case, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Oh, sir?
Just real quick, I just wanted to kind of add on to what Ms. Gurley was talking about in regards to the Thriftway. Not only the safety issue, but I think for a lot of the business owners, as well as the residents down there, it has become such a blighted situation. It distracts, tracks from the neighborhood. Appraisal values go down. It might harm businesses, because people are looking at that, saying, do I really want to stop here and shop downtown? So, I think, again, we need to make sure the emphasis is put against, you know, relate to them that the importance of it being taken care of one way or the other. Thank you. I agree with that. However, it sure is good to have the old Pizza Building in operation again.
Yes, and that took forever as well, and that property owner had to be held responsible. Anything else? Seeing none, as far as the, the mayor's minute.
Nope, I'm sorry, you're right. Go ahead, ma'am. Nope, sir.
I was wondering, did we miss something?
I apologize.
To piggyback, I hate to bring this up again, but really, Danny and Tom, you made me think about the property that's sitting at Nettleton and Metropolitan.
That's what we were talking about.
I thought you were talking about Thriftway.
I started with Thriftway, I moved on.
Well, I'll be, thank you very much.
Seeing nothing else?
I made sure you got your chance to talk, and that's what you did.
We'll move on to the mayor's minute. So, Mayor Garner is having a meeting with myself and Mayor Kahar and our county commissioners, Stites and Burrows, and we're going to be gathering the first of November. And if there's any updates or specific questions that you have for me to bring up, I'd be happy to do that. Any future items or concerns that you have concerning the unified government or the, our county and how, what our needs are concerning that. The ballot box or the county services center here, we've, we've offered and made, known that there's that opportunity, as well as several other questions. And if you don't have them tonight, that's fine. Just let me know, and I'll bring those forward. Also, lots of things are going on in Bonner Springs. All the great recreational quality-of-life things, as well as all the other venues that are going on and have a, a big load on our police and emergency services with Rimfest winding down, and...
188,000 people.
188,000 people came to Rimfest in Bonner Springs, and that load impacts the whole community. So, if you're able to and want to support this quarter cent sales taxes that benefit the emergency services, please encourage people to do that, because those people come to Bonner Springs and they're utilizing these services, the increase in the sales tax that they generate should be utilized as best we can to accommodate that. So, continue to encourage that and talk it up. I had the opportunity to vote early, and I really encourage everyone to vote early and, and often when there's an election, each time, once. But I went to the early polling place at the county election facility in Kansas City, Kansas, and it was run very well. So, there is that opportunity. We do have to make our way all the way in there, and it would be nice to have something out here that would be closer to the western portion of the county. But it, it was done very well, and if they could do something like that out here, I think it'd be very accommodating. I had a, a phone call, several phone calls, but I had a phone call this afternoon from a lady at 168 Warner concerning a pole that our fire departments had to go out to several times. And I guess this is not a power utility pole. It's a cable company pole of some kind. What we need, need to do ultimately, those franchisees are responsible to the city of Bonner Springs. We need to somehow find out what company is utilizing that pole and have them rectify this. This is not just a, a low line. This, this pole has failed and is, is no longer serviceable. It's been, I think, that either the power company or the fire department strapped it back up or something? Okay, I, I appreciate if, uh, when, when whoever hears about that, what company's responsible for it, if you could pass that along, I'd, um, pass it along to me?
Yeah.
Um, and I'll, uh, convey that to her. This is, from the pictures I saw, it's a serious concern, so, uh, we need to stay on top of that and I know we are, but sometimes the other people down the road, down the chain of command. So I appreciate that. It's at 168 Warner, it's a telephone pole, that's, that's what I call them. Yep. And, uh, other than that, I, uh, since our last meeting, I think it was since our last meeting, went to the open house, uh, the tour for Old Dominion. It looks like they're finally getting the KDOT, um, approach, uh, approved or done. Um, that will be, uh, great for them to be able to have that access, um, for the whole community, to be able to utilize that intersection like it was designed, um, with Starbucks, uh, online now and, um, that's serving a part of the community that, um, hasn't really had that op, had that service before. And, uh, there's a lot of commuters in that area. Number of runs on Seven Highway, is it increasing drastically? Yeah, because of all traffic accidents or?
I, well, I think it's the, being the close proximity of you and I.
Yeah, we hear them.
Yeah, I think the sirens, uh, are, uh, prominent as they leave the fire station and ultimately that shoots pretty much up 130 street ups, uh, yeah, K-7. Um, I think the runs have probably increased a little bit in terms of what we're responding to on the fire side is the predominant part of that and we have been sending both, uh, a fire apparatus and, uh, an ambulance on, on calls too, which explains some of the, uh.
Extra sirens.
Yeah, so, um, and again, I think it's just, uh, an increase in use a little bit.
Well, if, if, um, if it's, if it's no more than that, that's, you know, that's part of the seasonal increase that we've had, 180-some thousand extra trips up and down. But, um, if there's other traffic concerns that we need to address in another manner with K-7 and Sep, Kansas Avenue and K-7 and I-70, uh, I know KDOT has looked at some of the, uh, remediation projects they can do for those areas and we need to stay on top of that. Uh, those, those numbers could help support that, the number of accidents in those areas. Um, I know drive times are huge, uh, lots of traffic up there that we're not all aware of if we're not driving those at drive time. So, uh, if we can, if we can stay on top of that to help, uh, perhaps encourage KDOT to be responsible for those areas. I understand there was a traffic light problem up there today? Traffic lights were out, uh, I don't know if that's a regular thing or just the weather. It's a regular thing? So we need to, uh, if that's a bone breaker, we need to have whoever KDOT does that for, so. Need to watch those concerns as well. Yeah, they were, they were still talking about how long it was backed up, uh, when I was up there. There was no backup, so I drove right through, but, um, but I still get asked why did, it's not like any of us want the lights to go out. It just happens, so. Um, so the traffic concerns on K-7, we need to continue to be, uh, aware of and monitor for any, uh, actions we can encourage KDOT to do. Farmer's Market has also come to a close, they had a very successful, uh, year as far as I can tell. Um, one of the best ever with the, moving to the, uh, Second Street. And it looks like, um, the Pavilion Location, um, been researched and they're thinking of having that. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong way. Uh, having that there at the Centennial Park. And, um, so that's really encouraging, that'd be great.
Yeah, it was a great season. We definitely noticed a lot of increase in the number of folks that came.
Thanks, Roger.
The number of people that came because of the visibility of the market. So I know that moving it to Centennial Park will also increase that visibility and hopefully we can have a vibrant market for the next however many years.
Yeah, very good.
Sorry, I'm gonna hijack your topic for one moment. Have you talked about, do we have the capability to do some street banners? Maybe across K-32 coming into town or something that would bring some visibility to that?
We had talked about that in the past, I can't remember what the barriers to that were, but I'll definitely bring it up with Megan when we go into planning in January.
I worked an event in Shawnee last weekend and I know those are just super effective, so.
I remember a street banner we had over, uh, from two stoplights that eventually blew over because of it, but. That's neither here nor there, that's the, us old timers that have a history here. But I'm sure that would never happen again, twice. Um, other than that, I stand for any questions. I will be gone for our next meeting. Uh, I'll leave it in the, our wonderful hands of our, uh, Mr. Councilman Stevens, uh, to, to run the next meeting. Hopefully there won't be any protests or great outcry, not because I'm not here for one meeting, but because of whatever else is going on in the city. I organized that well last time, so hopefully that won't happen again, please.
We have an executive.
Oh, yes, uh, other than that, um, we're not going to adjourn, but we're going to, uh, uh, entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters, uh, with the exception of KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at?
9:10.
20 minutes? 9:10?
Still moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. So move.
Second.